Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, November 25th. Tonight we'll be meeting and hearing from the Hatfield Housing Authority regarding some additional parking across the street at Kapewong. And in the audience, we've got members of the Hatfield Housing Authority. We've got some residents of Kapewong, and we have some department heads here as well. And we just want to have a discussion so that we're all hearing the same thing on a way forward with adding some additional parking, which I think everybody would agree is necessary for across the street. It's just, you know, how do we get there and what's the best way of doing it? So, right now, I'm going to turn it over to Brenna Duquette, who is the Housing Authority manager, executive director. Okay. Before I do that, I'm sorry, my apologies. Ed had wanted to make an announcement, and he told me that about a minute ago, and I'd already forgotten. So, I apologize, but I just got the nudge, so this sucks.
Okay, one announcement. Every year, the Secretary of Agriculture picks one tree farm in the state to cut the first Christmas tree. This year, Hatfield was selected, and the mountain, I got it right here. So, the commissioner will be at Chestnut Mountain Tree Farm this year to cut the first tree on Friday, this coming Friday, November 29th at 10:00 a.m. So, that's right off of Pantry Road up on Mountain Road. So, if any of you want to meet the Secretary of Agriculture, especially the farmers in town, and say hi, I think that would be appreciated. So, I just want to let everybody know about that this Friday at 10:00 a.m. Because it's not every day the Secretary of Agriculture comes to town.
No.
So, I just wanted to make sure we know that.
Appreciate that, and congratulations to the tree farm. Thank you for that announcement.
I actually have one that I was going to make the other night, and I totally forgot. The 350th Committee is selling candles for the birthday cake. You can, we're not actually selling them, but you can sponsor one of the candles. There'll be 350 candles on the birthday cake that's here in the center of town. The first lighting will be luminaryum this year. And so, if you want to sponsor a candle, your name will appear on a sign that's ultimately put out there, and they're $25 apiece. The committee's been trying to go to different places where people are gathering in town. We're at the craft fair. I think we'll be at the winter concert at Smith Academy in December. But I have tickets, other people, Bobby Betzel, Anna Holhut, Eddie Leschko, Lori Baines, these are all people that have tickets if you're interested. So certainly, people can reach out to me if they'd like to buy one. $25, nice sponsorship for the 350th events.
Awesome, thank you. You all said, Ed?
All good.
Diana, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Marlene, did you have anything?
I don't have anything.
I didn't want to leave anybody on. Okay, all right. So, thank you both for your comments. So, at this time, we will in fact turn it over to Brenna to introduce their guest, and we're going to go over a proposal that is coming forward to the Board of Selectmen from the Board of Directors regarding some additional parking over at Kapewong.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Like Brian said, the purpose of this meeting is to introduce our proposed parking lot reconfiguration for Kapewong. It is something that we've been working on for a little bit, and we hope to get it started this spring. Here we have Dan, and he is a member of Ty &amp; Bond, who is the designer or architect of the above. So, he's going to go into more detail with the hopes of some feedback, and we can get a vote on this.
Like we said, my name is Dan Boulay. I'm a professional engineer. I work for Ty &amp; Bond. We are one of the on-call engineers that DHD hires throughout the state to do work on similar projects as this. So, we are engaged to help out Hatfield, to look at their existing parking, and to try to come up with a targeted improvement of six additional parking spaces on the property. Granted, this plan is probably hard for most people to see. So, what I did, so this is a set of plans we've developed that shows the existing conditions and propose improvements to get six additional parking spaces on the existing property. So, what I did was take a highlight to kind of indicate what's the best way to, is this okay?
Yeah, that's fine, I think. Marlene, why don't you slide?
I think I will.
So, what I did was the yellow is the existing property lines for the property site itself. It also shows the right-of-way of School Street. The orange is the existing pavement for the street, and also the existing pavement in the parking area itself. The blue is the proposed pavement areas that we came up with to provide six additional parking spaces. The biggest thing that kind of triggered this meeting and some of the discussion was the only way we could come up with of getting additional parking spaces would be developing parking outside of the Housing Authority designated property and within the right-of-way of School Street. So, that kind of triggered a lot of discussions, and really, this meeting that we're attending Some of the other things we've looked at was the pink, I should say, is an additional kind of alternative that we looked at, and that would provide another access point. So, you'd have essentially three drives into the parcel, and you'd only get two parking spaces. So, that was kind of an alternative we looked at. We kind of put it aside, thinking that it was just additional costs, additional work for simply two parking spaces. And it would also create another kind of interaction with the crosswalk. You now have three drives intersecting with pedestrians coming back and forth from Town Hall to the parking area.
I was just wondering, Dan, if, or maybe Brenna, for the benefit of people at home, if you could speak to the number of spaces that exist now, and the number of units that are there, and the number of spaces, and why this is such a problem. I think it's important for people to realize why we're here, really.
Yeah, of course. So, currently, there are 44 units in Kapewong, and only 22 parking spaces. And as of right now, the town has so generously let us utilize some of its parking lots. So, we have eight spaces that is across the street. So, our tenants have to go across the street. And then, in the wintertime for snow removal, it's kind of created a problem with that as well. So, although all 44 tenants don't have vehicles, there still is a great need for more parking.
So, really, our charge was to maximize the parking and get as many parking spaces as we could with the, kind of the real thought was at least six. And that was kind of the trigger of where we came up with. So, you currently have, as you pull in, you've got three on the right-hand side when you come in. We're essentially trying to copy that and mirror it, and put three additional on the inside on both sides. So, you've had a mirror image on both sides on the entrance and the exit. So, in doing so, it's reorganizing what that front little piece looks like. We would have to remove two shade trees, which is a consideration that people would have to bind into. Also, there's the existing sign, and park benches would be removed and kind of relocated in that same area. But obviously, the green space would get substantially smaller because we're taking out that area and putting in six paved parking areas.
And again, just for the benefit of people at home, I know that there were two other options. One was the, there's land available right to the west.
On Main Street, or out here.
Yeah, wasn't there, isn't there a parcel behind Kapewong?
There is.
And then, there was talk about doing it along Main Street. I'm just curious why those two weren't put forward just for the benefit of.
So, the parcel out back, there's actually a larger parcel out here. The issue is, and that's one of the reasons why I highlighted it, the property line for the facility is this yellow line. And so, the distance between the edge of the building and that property line really doesn't facilitate a drive to get back to that parcel.
Okay.
It's just too narrow. It would probably involve, you know, discussions of easements and so forth with the athletic property, and we didn't entertain that at all.
Would, Dan, would there be access to that same property off of Main Street, potentially?
I don't believe so.
Come in the other way?
Without going on to, going off their property, no.
Okay.
It's inaccessible.
Sure, just, we're asking the questions, so we want everyone to have an idea.
Yeah, I just want people to realize why some won't work.
I didn't have an overall property.
That's okay.
That probably would have been helpful.
And then, so if you could talk about the spaces along the front of Main Street and why those weren't proposed. I know there was some talk of putting them along the Main Street.
Yeah, and I do have a colored kind of concept of that. I don't know how many grains, but I can. So, what, one of the alternative was.
Thank you. Would there be one you could pop up? Okay. Camera can zoom in on it now.
So, this was another kind of concept that we just, was talked about through internally with Ty &amp; Bond and also with DHD and Housing Authority. And really, it does a couple of things. It does provide additional parking on Main Street, but it would be on town property, not within the Housing Authority parcel. It also would consider head-in parking. So, in other words, to go in there, that's fine, but now you're backing out onto Main Street. And we just didn't feel that for that population and for that location, I'm not sure it's allowed by your regulations either.
Well, there would be another consideration, too. If you had Main Street parallel parking, what would prevent the church from having parallel parking? What would prevent anybody else on Main Street? And it would take away from the aesthetics of Main Street. That was one fear.
Exactly.
So, that's another concern.
Right. I just wanted that pointed out for people at home, that those other spots were considerations, but there were legitimate reasons why they were ruled out.
And we certainly tried to come up with alternatives, and we just, we didn't seem we could come up with something that, really something we could recommend.
Maybe for the snow situation.
Yeah, things like snow.
As far as were we going to put our snow, you know, on the sidewalk, you know, and then we have to plow over the sidewalk, you know, if they're on the, the Main Street side.
I think, I believe that part of the reasoning for, at least talking about it and getting some feedback, was you double the amount of spaces that you would get, right? So, the proposal on Main Street would be 11 spaces, and the proposal to stay on the Kapewong property is six. So, you know, I think that was part of the reasoning that, you know, people said, "Well, why not go out front and, you know, perhaps, you know, double what you're going to be But, you know, I hear the concerns, I just.
Brian, on the other parcel, the rear parcel, we talked about it before at the authority, and it butts Smith Academy. And if you want to take easement from Smith Academy, build a road, go over a brook, come in backside, but that would be cost prohibitive.
You're right.
Right. Like I said, I just wanted to explain for people at home why this is the proposal that's moving forward.
Right, and I think everybody in this room, and probably the majority of people watching would agree, it's just tight quarters, right? So, to try to expand anything is, you know, tough, right?
I think another piece that just needs to be explained so that people at home understand is the funding sources and how this will all be paid for.
Okay, so, a portion of it, a good portion of it is funded through DHD, but we are also taking about $40,000, give or take some, from Kapewong funding.
Right.
So, we are personally invested in this, which I think speaks to how much we need it, that we're moving stuff around for it. So, it's both, it's both state-funded and also our personal.
Through the Housing Authority.
Right.
Right, and I think just to, if I may, just to touch on it again, or Dan can, or Brenna can, or Mike, or any of the organization. So, we would lose some green space. If this were to move forward, we would lose some green space, and I know that was a concern. Some of the residents were here previously at one of our meetings. But there would still be some, and things would just be pushed back, basically, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, the benches, you know, we talked about perhaps some sort of, if the shade trees need to come down, some sort of a coverage of some sort of, you know, shade, some sort of structure for shade. And benches would be, would still be there, or placed back there, or what have you, right?
Right.
So, could you just maybe, and I'm not sure how tight John can get into it, but just maybe, right where that parking is, like, once again, say, "Okay, here's where the benches are, here's the two trees, and it's going to be wherever it's going to end up to," you know?
Sure.
For the people on camera.
Yep. So, this area here is existing green space.
Yep.
The plan would call for this area to be, the grass and trees in this area would be removed and put pavement, and then we would mirror that on the other side, so you would have pavement here as well. The sidewalk that's there now would be removed. The parking benches, the park benches would be removed and reset, relocated, kind of closer to the, back up against the other portion of the parking, the parking area. The sign that's there would get removed and reset, so that would be generally in this smaller green space, which is, could essentially be this area. The other piece that we didn't really touch on was the crosswalk is here. This plan would propose it to move it down School Street and come here, and then back into this area of the parking.
I like the idea of moving the crosswalk, because I think people turn down that street, and that crosswalk is right there. And I've seen people really have to slam their brakes on if they take that corner fast and there's somebody in the crosswalk. So, giving a little bit more space before the crosswalk, I think, is actually a great idea. I think that's a good change.
Have we gotten to, I'm sorry, were you going to?
I was going to say that, so, part of this plan calls for this parking area is now on town property. That would remain, and we would put another spot here on town property, and another one here. So, these two on either side are kind of an existing condition.
Gotcha. The other two would be on town. Thank you. So, just back to the park area, because I think that's, that's one of the, you know, important issues that people are talking about. So, with, is the, what is this space approximately? So, once the park gets reorganized into parking spaces, how much area is there between basically the six new parking spaces, three on each side, from a land perspective? You know, like, where the bench?
The benches.
Where the benches are going to be? What's the amount of land, and what's going to stop a car from coming forward and going right?
Right.
So, just if you could talk about where those six spots are?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So, this area would have curbing, so it would be something, you'd have curbing to stop you, and then it would be grass. I don't have the square footage.
Just approximately, I mean.
Yeah, it's probably a 30 by 40 area.
Of what's left?
What's left.
Okay. It's just hard to visualize something, you know, because it looks like, you know, you lose parking spaces on both sides. It looks like it's just kind of getting squished down.
You probably are losing half of what's there.
Okay.
If I had to throw a number at it, but.
And of course, the idea is the cars would come in through one of those two spots and then, and park, and then to leave would back into, you know, towards the buildings, basically, back that way, and then pull straight out onto School Street.
Right.
I'm sure, which is what's happening now, but it just.
And as part of what we've done, and that's why I wanted to highlight the existing pavement area, is we're opening up this entrance drive to match the town standard of 24 feet. So, you can kind of see, we go from this orange area to the blue area to open that throat up, so it's more of a drivable. In compliance is, our goal is to make the new parking areas in compliance is to many of the town standards as we prefer, so.
And there's plenty of room, even if all of those spots are filled, there's plenty of room for an ambulance or fire truck to manipulate through that parking lot?
No.
If you'd like, Mike.
I was going to ask if there's anybody.
Yeah, if you'd like. So, I would tell you my concern. My blatant concern is the safety of the citizens that live there, and the fact that when that was built, it already poses some concerns. There is no fire lanes there. I'm kind of shocked that we got this far, and like, that no one wanted to say, "Should we have a fire lane?" You know, there really should be a fire lane on each side of that road. The dumpster shouldn't be there. The safety of getting in there and getting to the second floor and getting to the roof of this, it's an old building. It's an old complex that realistically needs some fire suppression upgrades, and we should be looking at that. We're not looking at that. So, instead, we need to take, look at stuff like this. We don't want to make it more complex. Every more, every additional car into that parking lot is going to potentially make it more complex. It's a tight lot already. I'm grateful they're going to widen it to 24 feet, but, you know, it's, there's no fire lanes. And no one's even asked about this. In fact, this, I, someone came to me in the community and said that I nixed the road on the left side of the complex. No one ever consulted me about the road on the left side of the complex. But I would think that we would actually want to leave some spots on the sides, and that we, we should think twice about. I think the Main Street option is your better option. You're not congesting the lot anymore. And so, from the, from the safety point of view and the people that live there, and getting ladders to windows and getting up to the roof, I wouldn't want to put any more cars in that lot. That's just my, my thing. It's, if you look where the current parking is, you're pretty close to the hydrant already, which would question, why, why did we ever allow? And why is no one, and all these things over the years, no one's ever said, "Is this a bad idea?" So, which I can't answer.
But where the spots will be now, there's no, you can't, you can't put apparatus there.
I can get them in there, it's tight. Ambulances can get in and out. The curbs, the curbs is not fun, but it's a bottom line. Ambulances can get in and out. Fire trucks, we have problems. It's tight.
I guess my question is, does this make it worse, or does it just keep it as bad as it is? It's bad.
I think it just keeps it as bad as it is.
Okay, so this doesn't make it worse?
Well, it depends. It depends on the cars, on how those cars park, and how much they jut out into that 24 feet. Like, I have this picture here that was taken, which is a nice picture, but if you look at the way the cars are parked in this picture, like, it already questions, you know, it's a tight lot already. One of those cars is backed out a little bit more, you know, someone's off the spot a little bit, and we have potential for problem. I just think that we're begging ourselves to bottleneck this lot, which already is bottlenecked, it's already tight.
So, can I just, so can you just, in a nutshell, you don't want this to happen, or you think if this happens, it doesn't make your situation any better?
I don't want this to happen. I would rather see the town look at the Main Street option.
Steve, so the trucks have to go into the parking lot to fight a fire?
Well.
They can't stay right on School Street?
If I, if I have to bring a ladder truck in to get to the roof, I have to get in the parking lot. And if I got to stretch 300 feet of hose to get to the back of the complex, I'd rather stretch 200 feet and have water a lot faster, those apartments. That's the bottom line.
Is that, is that sprinkled?
No, no. It's an old fire alarm system, it's not sprinkled. So, if you figure out what is the street, the length from the street to the back of the building, the middle building and the back, that's the longest lay we have. Couple hundred feet.
Fire alarm system isn't connected to the.
I can barrel the truck in. I can put the truck in there, and I can hook it to the hydrant, and I can cut that, I cut that maybe a third off it. But it's, it's a reality, it's a tough complex. It doesn't pose anything, you know, ladders have to be off the ground. Taking someone who's, who has mobility issues off a ground ladder is not fun. It's a reality, because the way the construction's made with the front and the back doors, a lot of the back doors we find when we inspect have been obstructed at times, because those apartments are tight and people put furniture in front.
When you have an ambulance call there now, where do you park the ambulance?
Right, generally in the front. We can fit, the ambulance gets in and out. The curbs are tough, but that's not a big deal. The ambulance gets in and out without a problem.
When you say in the front, you mean in the, like, in front of the community hall?
In the loop, yes, inside the community, in front of the community room, in that area. We try not to block, but.
And too, Diana, sometimes people come to the complex, and they also park in the fire lane. So, if you've got an ambulance coming, even if your ambulance coming in there, if you're in a fire lane there, with that ambulance even coming in there, you've got a tight squeeze there.
I thought you said there were no fire lanes.
There's no designated fire lanes, but, but if it's on the sides there, they do, he's right, they throw an additional car in here and there. That's why, you know, we're going to throw a few more, I just worry, that's all. That's, that's just my take, though, it's only, it's within, he's right, the width is within the code, and that's, we'll work with whatever's there, bottom line.
Okay.
Well, and I think that's why we wanted to have everybody here, was to have the conversation and hear all the pros and cons of any sort of proposals. So, Steve, Chief, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't, did anybody else, either in the audience, residents, or any of the other department heads have any comments or concerns?
With the spaces proposed there, you also got a, you got a pole there with your cable and everything like that there. You know, somebody going to come in sometime there, and who knows? They might get close to that pole, or get real close to it, or might clip it, or whatever, I don't know.
Where's that? Can you show us that?
The existing pole that's, oh, here by the street, the light.
Yeah, the pole right in the middle.
Oh, in the middle here, yeah.
Right next to the, right next to the catch base in there.
Yep. So, our plan did not show any changes to essentially the curb, the location of the curb inlet, but we would widen this piece and then over here. So, we're not getting any closer to the light pole, other than the parking spaces. The entrances would remain the same.
Yeah, Bob?
So, speaking on behalf of the planning board, want to raise an issue that Ed mentioned earlier, and this sort of runs counter to Steve's desire to maybe see the parking on Main Street. So, there's a couple of issues, I think, from the planning board perspective. One, our bylaws right now do not allow new construction to have parking that backs out onto a main way. And, you know, we don't have a more main way than Main Street, other than West Street. So, that would be an issue, just in terms of it being in compliance with our zoning bylaw. Also, I think, getting to Ed's point, it significantly changes the character of Main Street. I mean, I know that there's a lot of, you know, quaint New England villages with back-out parking. Those are more commercial towns, you know, where they have, you know, a Main Street with shops and so on. We don't really have that in Hatfield. And then I'd be, so I'd be concerned about how that would change the look of Main Street, particularly, you know, for 11 spots, and then if another business or institution asked for something similar and saying, "Well, you let Kapewong do it." And then the other question, other issue would just be safety. I mean, Main Street is, you know, it's a major, such as it is, it's a major thoroughfare in town. There's a lot of traffic on Main Street. There's certain times of the year, like right now, there's a lot of potato trucks on Main Street. I would just be concerned about the fact that you're backing out onto Main Street, and also you're within the proximity of a major intersection. So, those just, from a safety standpoint, seems like it would be a poor alternative. But I can certainly appreciate Steve's concerns about getting heavy fire equipment into that space.
Thanks, Bob.
Just two things to piggyback on what you're saying. There's one business on Elm Street where people back out onto Elm Street, and it's dangerous. I've seen some close calls there, I'm sure there's been probably some accidents. So, I hear what you're saying. The other thing that's really obvious when you look at this diagram is what's going to happen during a snowstorm with the Main Street spots. I mean, they're just going to be.
Plowed in.
Plowed in. So, so that's definitely less than ideal, so.
Garrett had a comment.
Yeah.
What did?
Garrett.
Oh, Garrett, I'm sorry.
Are they going to move the crosswalks further up School Street?
Correct.
Have they mediated the plan?
They would be if they were to be relocated.
So, where's the spot on the, be the west crosswalk? Where is that going to come out on the other side?
Right, which side of this street is it? Where, where is it going, where in front of Town Hall, or where next to Town Hall is that going to?
It's, it's right near the entrance into the driveway, so it's right at the edge of the driveway.
Is that a, is that a sidewalk there?
We'd have to look at it harder, but it would, it's going to be, it's going to be a.
Yeah, state-funded, partially state-funded. They're, they're going to want to know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
But there's a sidewalk there, at the end, yeah. But there's a sidewalk there, at the end, yeah.
There's no sidewalk on Capewalk side, right?
No, it would go into new sidewalk into the parking area.
So I guess that would have to be research and plan, on the plan to see where that sidewalk is gonna go?
Correct.
Garrett, did you have any other concerns about snow removal? Who does the snow removal at Capewalk? Does the town do that?
No, no.
And so.
My indoor landscape doesn't really know.
Okay, so any concerns with the proposal and your snow removal on School Street or anything?
The way we do it now is we move out the rear parking lot aside to stop, you know, if we commit a plow, I actually plow the sidewalk. So I plow one half and then they'll either move the cars and I'll come back and clean out the spot. And then everybody else can come back in and I do the other side.
You're talking about this lot?
Out back here.
No, I'm talking about any concerns with what's gonna happen when you do snow removal on School Street?
You're gonna have to move, cars are gonna have to move out and I'm gonna have to plow that part out.
The new spaces? Snow will dump all the way in there?
Not our spaces, no.
Not you, not their spaces? The, the new spaces proposed, would you fill those with snow? Because there's quite a right of way there. It looks like space, no?
Our town progress? Those front two are on.
The front two, these two would essentially be where the existing ones are now. I don't know what, what snow removal happens to those existing. Right, but is there an issue with the parking space?
The three spots that are there now, do you fill those in with snow when you plow? You do?
If there's, maybe if there's nobody in here, you move your car out to get, to get in.
So if they don't turn enough, it's gonna hit our back ends.
But when I say right away, it's grass, it's not, it's not in the paved area, but.
Right, so there, but I'm saying there isn't enough of a buffer between the curb where you plow and where that first spot starts to accommodate some snow removal?
Well, I, I parked next to the street, my space was there. And I was always having a lot of snow by my car on that side, yeah.
But did it like snow, but, but I mean, were you, were you actually not able to move the car? I mean, did it come up to the car or did it, did you have to move?
Well, you have to shovel it out.
Okay.
I don't know about your side, but.
No, my side was the same, I always had to shove the snow off, up to the curb. Because the plow can't get in there the way they come around that corner, they can't get in there to plow up to the side, up to the sidewalk. So there was like, Dave, you get a lot of snow in there.
We went from three parking spaces to two parking spaces.
In the winter.
Last winter, last winter wasn't severe, those three on the end there. And she's in the mirror and it's on the opposite side. Just while I can cut the floor for a second.
While I'm on the sidewalk side.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
You still have only two existing entrances to the, all the parking, correct? There isn't a third one in the middle?
Nope, the, no, no, it's the orange, so that's kind of the existing parking. So it's essentially the same.
So those people, presuming, let's use the left side, because that's the side that I'm talking about. So the only way that they can get into that parking place and get out of that parking place is to pull in the existing entrance on the left, pull in there and then back out that existing way, which is right where the other parking place is now, where you almost hit the fence to begin with, because there's hardly enough room to make a turn. And we're gonna put three more there on both sides?
Yep, yeah, so, well, you could either go in and out this way or do the local.
Yeah, but how do, how do people get into those new parking spaces there, in blue?
Similar to what you just described, yeah.
Let's take the three on the left for now, because it's, yeah, how do they get into those parking places?
So you either have to pull in and then back in, or pull in this way and head in.
So there's barely enough space there now for the existing parking spaces to be able to turn around. You can't do it, I, yes, I was just telling them, last, last week, I was trying to pull out and someone coming around the corner, I came very, very close to getting T-boned right there, because someone's coming around the corner a little quicker than they should. It's awful tight and you're just gonna make it much more tight.
Can I hop on that?
Sure.
What Dave just said, so using those left-handed, those three new parking places, because of the cars that would park across from them in the existing parking, right? I have that right, okay. So is it not gonna be wide enough to actually come in that left spot and pull in head in? Head, head, headlong? You would mention come in and then kind of back into the parking place? I mean, is there enough room to make the turn or make the swing?
Go in and pull in, okay.
Admittedly, this first one here is going to be.
That's a tight one, okay. We just wanted to make sure, if you came in now when you didn't have to back in.
You could go around the long way though and then you have more space.
More comfortable in that maneuver then. I mean, I will say that, first of all, I should back up, this is schematic design. So nothing has been finalized and, you know, the, the issues with crosswalks and handicap accessibility, I mean, that'll be our, that's our charge in the end, but.
Yeah, this is about getting it out there.
Yeah, this is by no means complete and a hundred percent, so I just want to make sure that, that's clear.
I just want to ask, and, and I know that the green space and the benches were an issue. Are there, are there benches and green space that's also shaded on the Main Street side? Aren't there benches on that side?
Yes, there are. There's two benches.
No, I'm talking about on Main Street at Capewalk. There are benches out there and there's really nice shade, if I'm not mistaken.
The face Main Street, your back is against the building.
Right, and I know, Roland especially, I know that you really enjoy sitting in that spot. But if space is the issue and safety is the issue, would it make sense to not have any green space there? Pull those spaces closer together, so you now have a wider entrance? And then people who would want to sit outside and enjoy some fresh air and some shade would, would just go to the front of the building? Or actually the side of the building along Main Street and enjoy the benches that are there that won't be disturbed by the project? So if you, do you know what I'm saying? Pinch those spaces together so that now you have wider lanes for Stevie's apparatus? And wider lanes for turning radius? It means you give up the, the green space there, but there is other green space available and the issue was shade and the other space is already shaded. So I'm just curious.
That certainly could be an option, so.
So they, the cars would just be nose to nose.
Yep, so in essence, you, you kind of pull these together?
Yes, well, that's what.
Make this opening wider.
Yeah, so that would solve your problem, Steve. And, and it would solve the turning radius problem? And it would just mean that the residents would have to go sit on the other side of the building? But where they'd have shade, which they were now gonna be lacking in this location because of the removal of the shade trees. To me, that seems like a logical solution. It still leaves a little bit of a problem with your snow removal with those spots that are upright on Street, on School Street. But we've been dealing with that already in the spot that this woman parks in. I mean, I guess there's no perfect solution, we'd have to deal with that, but.
Bob?
The only comment I would make suggestion on that is that pinching those in, as you suggest Diana, is certainly a, an alternative. I wouldn't go so far that they came nose to nose, but enough space so that you have a sidewalk through there. So that people have an opportunity to walk from the Capewalk building through a sidewalk, then out to your, you know, out to School Street as opposed to always walking in a parking lot.
Right, but I think that that's, that really solves a bunch of our problems, including the concerns the residents had of benches with no shade. So to me, that seems like a logical way to go.
Just, just, we've lost two trees, one on Main Street and one on School Street from storms in the last two years. So, you know, I, I share the concerns of the, of the tenants though, it's nice to be under shade tree, but you're only under the shade, what, five months of the year versus the seventh or not? There's no leaves on the trees, so.
But there's, yeah, but I mean, so it's also not as hot, then you're not wanting shade.
Also, we've got a half a million dollar park we've got sitting there, which is benefiting.
Exactly.
The tenants probably more than any other citizens in the town.
Right, so there's, my point is that there's plenty of green space available.
You know, if you're knocking down, they're nice trees, you know, I looked at them, they're nice trees. But could there be an alternative, you know, is there a tree planting idea going on? We've never even discussed really, you know, tree planting on Main Street. We've got a CPA grant's been sitting in the idol for three or four years for planting trees in a historical district. I think that qualifies. So, you know, money being there for trees, but where to put them is, would be the issue.
Right, right.
I guess who I think can raise, just looking at the, sorry, it is, we're, we definitely get closer to that light pole that's in that center. We have to look at that hard as to how do we protect that light pole?
Right.
And how close we can really get to it.
But it's worth looking at.
We'll move it. Ma'am, you wanted to say something?
Forgive me, I haven't been to prior meetings.
You don't, no need to apologize.
How far does this foresee the expansion of 44 apartments? I don't, Brenna, maybe you can tell me how many cars currently are registered for parking? And does this allow for even more cars to, I mean, in the future? You know, how many residents have cars? And how much do we need to plan? We don't want to have to do this another five years, for example.
Right, right. So not every resident has a car. I believe about 30 out of the, the 42 that we, we currently have are, we have 44 units, 42 residents at the moment, 22 parking spots, so I'm just gauging off of that. So, you know, we, it does take a good amount of residents who are in the town's parking and brings them over to Capewalk and then, and, you know, only a handful will be left to be across the street and.
I see.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Also, another thing, since Brenna's been here, she's addressed some of the parking issues. At her last meeting, she came up with a plan that decals for our tenants. They're gonna get decals, so, you know, the police and fire, if they see a car, they'll recognize that decal is a resident of the, of the Capewalk.
Not a visitor or just, yeah, that's a great idea.
I think is that, is another concern, I guess, is the residents versus visitors and home needs and stuff. So I think that additional parking will just really help that as well. And maybe if the town allowed us to keep some spots across in your lot, that could be visitor only. And then residents are, are in Capewalk. Something else to think about, I guess, is we're having some issues with that is where, where visitors park. There's definitely a need for more parking.
Roland, I know that the green space was important to you when we talked about this last time. How do you feel about the proposal of bringing those spots closer together so there'd be no green space right in that location? But you, you'd go up either to Main Street or across to the park?
Over on Main Street, on your, closest to the intersection there, I believe you have the shade there. If you use that other bench farther up on Main Street, there is no shade there in the afternoon.
Okay, but there is some shade out there and people, I know sometimes even people would bring chairs up to this, so you could bring a chair out. If the bench was full, you, and then there's also gonna be space across the street and shade, okay.
Sir?
I'm Tom Boyer, DHCD. Maybe we could propose adding bench space as well in this project, if the town would allow that.
In the, in the front of the bench?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Well, the benches that are there.
My question in the future, how many more spaces do we need? Right now, you're proposing add an, six more spaces, do you think? Okay, so six to, six to 22 is 28 and if we have 44 units, well, we're gonna, we're still gonna need some more parking.
Not everybody has a car.
You know, the, I think that.
We have eight spots available for us, but I'm not sure if all of you are full.
I, I would say that I, I think over the last few years at least, not simply my doing, but since I've been on the board with, with various colleagues through the years, I think there's been a good relationship between the town and Capewalk. As, as far as understanding the, the needs for parking and, and the needs for the residents to have a place to park. And proximity wise, it couldn't have worked out any better really for the residents of Capewalk. I mean, I told the story that a couple of years ago, when my mother-in-law lived, you know, in, in an elderly project, it was basically everybody, get your car out of here and they all just had to go somewhere, you know? And, and we're fortunate that we've got the relationship we do, which we allow the, the tenants to, you know, we plow it, bring some cars over, you do your thing and, you know, and so to your point, I don't see that changing. I, I sure hope not, I can't imagine it would. I think to Diana's point and Ed's, and I, I mean, this is, you know, it's an emotional thing, right? It truly, I think this is more of an emotional issue for, for the residents, really, than, than anything. Because, you know, we're all used to whatever we have and, and that potentially could go away. But I don't think anybody can say there's not enough parking, that there are enough parking spaces as it stands now. So I think to Roland's question about, like, what, what might be next? I, I think Capewalk's maxed out, so if they need, I don't know what's next, we'd have to relook at something different. Whether it's out back or out front or to the side, that's what would have to happen in the future, should there be room for more, a need for more parking growth, so.
I just would add that when I was on the board before, this came before us a number of times. And, and at that point, it was residents absolutely furious that they had to park across the street at the Town Hall lot. And, and that it was dangerous for them to cross the street and they weren't happy about it. And so I think if we have these funds available through the state agency at this point to add these spots, which will help the problem, but won't solve the problem completely and on a permanent basis. But when you talk about emotional issues, I mean, the safety of people not having to cross the street and the safety of people being able to have an ambulance or a piece of fire apparatus have easy access to that property, to me, that's at the top of the list of priorities when we look at this project. So the safety of the residents not having to cross the street and then the safety of them once they're in the complex if they had some kind of emergency need. So I would suggest that we look at moving those spots close together and maybe creating a nicer benched area on the other side, so that everybody still has their space and they can enjoy being outside and watching the activities in the center of town and all of that. But you've created, you've added the spaces and kept them as safe as possible.
Bob?
One thing from the safety perspective and the crosswalk, and I don't know if this is something that DHCD can do as part of this grant. I've been concerned that our crosswalks aren't more noticeable in town. Like the one right out here in front of Main, in front of Town Hall. I mean, I've walked, parked, you know, across the street and come across and, you know, people don't even pay attention to the fact that there's a crosswalk there. And, you know, the Elm, Elm Street Village or the Hatfield Village. So I wonder if in putting the crosswalk in here, there could be, you know, that signage where you can press the button and it lights up? Or out west, they have the flags. I've been, I've been in Western communities where they have like, they're basically on one of the poles, there's like a, a bunch of flags. And as you walk across, you pick up a flag and then you stick it in the basket on the other side. So there's always a collection of flags on each side. Yeah, and so it would seem to me that upgrading that crosswalk would be a.
I think ultimately lighting would be.
Yeah, I would prefer lighting.
You push the button and it flashes, right? Yeah, and then to your, your offer to put in the benches, put, put some of the, we have the, we have funding for these shade trees and just slap a couple of those extra shade trees by those new benches. I mean, it's not gonna be in our lifetime, Roland, right? There'll be shade at some point, right?
And there's enough room in that plan if anyone's in a wheelchair on those, on those spaces to get in and out?
We have one handicap spot.
They're not handicap spots, they're just regular parking spots?
Yeah, so they would. We create, essentially we would create one of those.
Garrett, do you, what do you think about the proposal of bringing them in closer? I mean, it doesn't really alter where your snow goes, because it's going the same place.
Talk about me?
No, Garrett, I was talking.
There's one, two, three, four spots that on either end, those are fine, like you said, there is a buffer zone in between, that doesn't affect us at all.
Okay.
The ones in the, the proposed ones? I mean, the, the cars that are parked that, basically on, above the street, they get plowed in, I mean, that's no different than anybody.
It's, well, and it's been happening to her spot, her existing spot gets plowed in some, so. I mean, it's not ideal, but it, you know.
And remember that there's only a handful of us who are able enough to go out and, and help other people move the cars. and help other people move the cars.
Right.
Is the goal tonight to sort of get a way forward? Is that, and, and I asked that, and then, then that can be fine too, to the space between, should it go this way? How much room between the new six spots? Can there be some grass there? Can there be some shrubbery maybe along the edges so that when snow, you know, right? The, the actual design, right?
I like the sidewalk between the...
Oh, I agree, but on, on either side, you know, a little bit of grass, whatever. So the, the idea tonight, I believe, and I think that's why the housing authority wanted to be here, was to sort of get the blessing from the select board to move forward with a, a plan. And then, if that moves forward, then to fine tune the plan as far as, you know, what makes sense and...
Poles and all of that kind of stuff, yeah.
Is, is that right? Is that, is that the vision? Is that what you guys had?
We would like the blessing of the town, of the selectmen.
If you move the cars close together and you put a sidewalk in the middle, when they plow, that snow's going to pile up on that sidewalk, right? Where's he going to put it if he plows this way? Because now he moves it, the tree on the side, he plows it up on, up on the grass. He tries to get as close as he can over the, what do you call, the over things?
Yeah.
Or, or what's he going to do when it's in the middle? Is it going to block the sidewalk and then somebody has to go clear the sidewalk?
Who actually clears the sidewalks over there now?
But is there a sidewalk on the, goes into the street?
I would think the snow removal...
It's just going to have to be removed. Yeah, I mean, it's just going to be part of the snow removal plan.
Vince.
Well, the sidewalk there probably wouldn't work out, because they have to push the snow so much. Okay? So the snow would go...
I got a good story.
Same as it does in the east and the west. All the snow from that lot ends up in those, past those parking spots, up over the curve and piled up. And then we have a really harsh winter, they have to haul away.
A sidewalk is not a good idea there then? Are we now saying a sidewalk in the middle is not a good idea if we bring things closer?
Probably not, but we can, you know...
It's a good idea, but you can't use it in, we can't use the sidewalk in the winter because the snow's going to be piled there.
But you, you should be able to have snow removal. You should be able to get it, get it removed and, and I also, you know...
I was just wondering.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you have people who remove the snow on all the other sidewalks. So it's just another sidewalk.
I think it's a legitimate question.
Right.
But I can't imagine that the snow removal company doesn't have a process for if a sidewalk's coming down the middle between, you know, if, if that's going to be, to Bob's point earlier, right, it's important to have a sidewalk. You know, you, we don't want people walking in, in the road, if you will, or in the parking lot, if, if we can avoid that. We want them on a, we want them on a, on a sidewalk.
Nine months out of the year, you'd use a sidewalk.
Well, right, just to Bob's, to John's point, right. It's only a couple stories.
Picture the, picture the parking lot at Big Y. So cars nose in and there's a sidewalk between them. And in the winter, the parking lot gets plowed and the sidewalks get cleared, and you can walk on all of it. So it's, it's the same concept. Do you know what I mean with the, yeah?
Except there won't be carriages left in the middle of it, like there are at Big Y, hopefully.
Right.
One, one thing you could leave, you know, some of the parking, in theory, public transportation.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. That's a whole nother topic for another night.
You know, where I live, we have a bus come through three, four times a day.
Right.
So, uh, the, we don't have sewer, but we, we have, we have the buses go through. So there is access to, you know, the people who live on Route 5, you know, there's a lot of people use those buses.
Right.
You know, it, it's down here where they should have, you know, the, the mini buses anyway, for, especially for some of our elderly.
Right.
You know, can't rely on the council on aging to move, move them around. What do you call, there should be public transportation in this town, so.
It'll be a long time, I think, before there's routes that are effective enough and efficient enough to have someone actually make the choice to not have a car.
Right.
So I think we, I think we need to think about the parking spaces, is my point.
About the same, how we get our train stop back, right?
Those trees will be grown, yeah.
Actually, John, I, I went to FRTA meetings and we discussed that, trying to get a route through here, but it wasn't cost effective for them at this time. But I believe they're on the FRTA site, if they want to get a transportation, I believe there's something that they can do. They can actually call a number for special transportation through FRTA.
Which you can do through the council on aging as well.
Only if you're...
NPVTA.
But only if you're 60 and older for the council of aging. Not everybody over there is 60 and older, so those that are less need, that don't drive need some form of transportation. I think that's what we're sort of saying.
All right, thank you for that, Ed. All right, is there anybody here that would like to make another comment or two regarding the proposal? And perhaps, I should say, the proposal as amended, maybe? You know, with the spots being a little bit closer? You know, I, I know it's probably for everybody isn't a perfect solution, but, you know, it's got to be a little give and take of, of improving the facility and, and access to the facility and the parking at the facility. Diana or Ed, did you want to say anything?
Okay, I just want to summarize what I'm hearing is, is from the fire chief's concerns and other concerns, putting them closer together, putting a sidewalk now makes it a little bit better for fire safety and ambulance.
Yeah, yeah, we'll work with whatever's left in the end. And, but, but yes, less congested, absolutely. And less congestion is good, and in the end, we'll work with whatever it is. It's, you know, nothing's perfect, but this is, it's a little bit better than, than it would be, and, and that's fine.
And the other concern as far as bench and green space, we do have areas of green space. It's not exactly where it was, but now we can make that available. Because looking at this plan many, many times and walking over there on Main Street, unless you were to redirect the sidewalk and made that blacktop along the building, which would be terrible aesthetically, I don't see any other way to add space over there unless they buy one of the houses on either side down the road and then they have access. But I think that's, that's a reasonable compromise, and I'm hoping everybody can understand it is a compromise.
I think it's workable, so can, should I make a...
It's the best we can do at this situation, at this point.
You guys like that idea of moving them closer? That works for, for you and John, the...
It'll, it'll work, but we have to talk to the engineer.
Right, well, that's...
Because he's going to lose, we'll lose a little bit on, on the, the left and the right also, right? Those parking spots?
Well, that's...
You squash these in, what happens to this space?
Well, that is, that's kind of what I was going to get at, is, you know, we can certainly pull these closer together and essentially make these parking spaces deeper, but we have parking right here that if we made these and then this comes with it, then we lose these two parking spaces, which I didn't think you were going for. I think it was just trying to make this closer together to make this area...
Yes, but it was for the fire, for the fire people also.
Right, but it pulling in and out.
It, it's pulling in and out, and it's the, the radius for getting residents into and out of those spots.
Yep, so in essentially this driveway, there will, into, both in and out, would get wider.
Right, so where, where you end up, it's not going to be any wider than it has been for, since, what, 1971?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two? But hit, for purposes, Steve, of you actually turning in and turning out, you'll have more space as will the residents.
And there's less chance that the, that those spaces are going to crowd, crowd the lane.
Yep.
And, and there are the lane, which if you look at parking characteristics like on this map...
Right.
Sometimes staying in the lane is a thing.
Yeah, the proposed parking would be eighteen by nine, spot, minimum required.
Plus the whole lot's being redone, so there'll be bright white lines marking everything out. Baby steps. Right, Dan?
So can I make a motion? I don't know if we need to do this. I was going to make...
Do mine before you do. Did anybody else want to make a comment from, from anywhere? Anyone in the audience, any of the residents? Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I would make a motion that we ask Tai and Bon to look at redesigning by, by pulling those spaces in closer with the sidewalk in between and see what you come up with, if there's issues with needing to move the pole or anything like that. That's, in, in an effort to create more space as emergency vehicles enter and exit the property and also to give better turning radius to residents.
I don't know, we need a motion for that.
You probably don't, but...
In conclusion, are you asking them to, Tai and Bon to design something more finite?
Yes.
And then be reapproved, or are we getting the permission to encroach on your property?
I think it should be redesigned and we approve it. I don't think we should just...
I, I, no, I understand that, but what I'm at, we're here before the planning board, the fire department, and as long as everybody's on board, I don't want Dan to have to go through all of this and then have it get denied.
Right.
Right.
I agree, Tom. I, I think probably what you're looking for, which I think is reasonable, is at least a consensus from the board of selectmen.
Right.
Right? Because we'd rather, we'd rather vote on the final plan to answer your question. But I think there's a consensus of the board, and if you want us to take a vote, we certainly can. But I believe there's a consensus having this conversation, plus our previous one, that this makes the most logistical sense for the additional parking at Capewalk.
And maximum public safety.
John?
It, it, we're at a, you know, a point here. We're a small housing authority. We don't get a lot of funding from other agencies.
Yeah.
Right.
If we don't take advantage of, of the state funding now, we'll lose it to another town.
Right.
So it just...
That's why I want to move forward with this proposal and not waste any time. Let's see if it's going to work out from an engineering standpoint and, so my, I guess I would go into it unless there's something catastrophic with this proposal that we're not envisioning now, then it's the pole. We can move poles, no?
You can.
Yeah.
It's costly, so it definitely impacts the budget available for construction dollars.
Yep, Garrett?
That, as far as the crosswalk, putting them in without having it designed through the ADA, that's a huge step to be compliant. I mean, you, you got, oh, we'll just move, move these parking spots closer, we'll just put a sidewalk in.
Do we need to?
You can't do that. I mean, you have to, that has to be engineered in.
I think they should be packed in.
That sidewalk is there already, Garrett.
I, I would think the final plan...
No, no, no. When that one got erased and put over by the manhole.
Yeah? But you want to move that one through?
Now we want to just move it back.
Well, it's legitimate.
Basically.
Yeah.
Where it was, where it was before.
So can we make as part of this proposal that the sidewalk be ADA compliant?
We can't do anything without it complying.
Right, right, so...
Yeah, if we, if we change things, we, we don't say, well, we're just doing it by the seat of our pants.
Right, of course. So that would be part of all of this, okay.
That was part of our original sculpt, and we wouldn't propose anything.
I think the only addition would be the lights, if, if that's something that we can...
That would be really great. Both for the residents of Capewalk, there's schoolchildren who cross there. I mean, that's, that's a, that would be a really great addition. If it's, you know, if it's financially feasible.
We could certainly, we've done those before. It's, again, it's a financial cost of including those. Typically, you know, it's the solar powered type, they're not hardwired, but they are interlinked if you're going to have them either side.
I was going to say, until the neighbors start complaining about the excess light.
Well, I doubt many people at Capewalk are crossing the street at night.
We're lucky, it'll be the first crosswalk, and then we can light more of them. Really. It's a good idea. It's, it's a great idea. Maybe it'll be the first one, then we can have, next year we could have two.
I agree.
Year after, we might have three. It, it would be great if we could do a number of them in town, so...
That would be, I agree with you. That's a, that's a good starting point.
You don't propose a change orders, are you?
I don't approve, I don't approve anything.
And I guess in terms of neighbors complaining about the light, I mean, I, I don't think there's going to be a ton of people crossing the street at night, but at night is particularly when they need the safety, so.
Yeah. They need the light.
I mean, if you're going to complain because an elderly person is crossing the street safely, that's kind of bad.
So I, I think it's, I would, I think it's fair to say, and Ed and Diana jump in here, that there's a, there's a consensus of the board, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but there's a consensus of the board that if we're going, if this, if anything's going to move forward, it's going to be a plan with those six parking plays, bleh, six parking spaces. And it's a matter of final, finalizing exactly what the design will be. And, and so Main Street's off the table at this point, the, the back parking lot's off the table. And I, I think what we're looking for is just maybe, and hate to put you through it again, but like, almost a final, a final design and, and if possible, a little bit larger, you know, when it comes back. And then, and then we'll just say, okay, this is, this, this proposed sidewalk in between the new six spots is going to be four feet, eight feet, ten, you know, whatever it is. So we have better dimensions, so we know what we're talking about. Is that, is that okay? And does that keep...
Meantime, Brenna, you could do a little research about snow removal...
Right.
On that spot. We can have some of those questions answered.
And does that affect the timing, John or Tom, of the grant? I mean, we don't want, we don't want to miss anything, and we're not trying to delay this, but we're, we're trying to make sure we have all our ducks in a row.
That's understood. We don't want to make any mistakes or offend anybody by pushing, but a springtime start would be an ideal time. And there was talk about your three fif, 350th year...
Yes.
Anniversary, and when was that?
The parade is June 13th. So ideally, the project would either be done by then or not started until afterwards.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that. I don't see it starting before then, no.
Okay. But the funding is okay? The fund, I mean, we, that gives him time to redesign. I mean, I would assume there'd have to be a bidding process and all of that. So we'd probably be looking at that timeframe anyway. But that doesn't create any problems with our funding, waiting, okay, so...
That's our concern, we don't want to miss an opportunity. We don't want the housing authority to miss an opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
There will still be residents who park across the street.
Yes, yep. Diana or Ed, did you have any other, anybody else have any last minute or last concern that they'd like to address before we close the meeting?
Well, are we taking, are we taking a vote, or?
Well, I think we...
Did you want to vote?
I did, I...
Well, I don't need to vote. I think we're in a good place.
Okay, so we would, we would vote on the ultimate, excuse me, on the final design that's presented to us next.
Okay, so you scratched your motion.
It was never seconded.
It wasn't seconded. There was a discussion that followed immediately.
Yeah, right, we would, yeah. All right, so everybody's good? All right.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your input back there.
Board of Directors and Department Heads for coming. Dan, thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
And Tom.
Thank you.
We're all set with, with this portion of the meeting, so you can certainly stick around. Yes?
I guess one other question would be, once we have final time, will we do this again?
Yes.
I didn't know.
It should be much shorter.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Yep. So, thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you. Marlene, did you have anything else or...
I just want to add that this will require an easement.
Yes.
And I'd like to research it, it may require town meeting authorization.
Let's just make sure of that. It'll review with legal counsel and statute regulations.
If there's, if there's an easement necessary, we'd need to get a town meeting...
So, yeah, we'll need, we'll probably need...
The Housing Authority will require an easement.
Yeah, and we'll probably need some dimensions of, of the town property that's proposed to be used as part of this parking, so when we go to town meeting in May, we, you know, we have all the D's.
I started thinking for annual town meeting.
Is there existing ones or are those...
Take care of the what?
So there's existing parking spaces that are in that...
That don't have an easement?
I don't know. That, to me, that could be part of the...
Oh, sure they do.
Oh, there are existing parking spaces?
Well, on the end, but we're talking the middle, so we'll have to see what that's all of.
Just go on ahead.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. No, I'm with you. Let's get her, okay.
Good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Marlene, was that it?
Yes.
Adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, again, before we adjourn, Friday, Secretary of Agriculture or Health, the farmers can make it to the tree farm to visit them, that's all.
That's right, and have a happy Thanksgiving if you see this beforehand. I've said that at our last three meetings, but we keep having another meeting, so I'll say it again.
It's been a lot of meetings, really.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Motion's made, seconded, all those in favor to adjourn? Aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you, everybody.